You get so. So anyway, yeah, good.
I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. It is seven P M on May second, two thousand twenty-three. We are in the meeting room at the Town Hall. I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
Lee J Feldman, Town Planner.
Marty Kane.
Susan Senate.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Gannon, I am the Chair. We have before us an approval of the agenda, which includes approval of the minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have public comment. Public comment is reserved for anybody who wants to talk about something that is not on the agenda. Uh, we have a public hearing, a proposed amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. We have a pending application, a Michael Thomas Major Subdivision Sketch Plan. And then we have a vote on the proposed amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And I'm going to exercise a little discretion. We're going to have the public hearing and then we will immediately go into having the vote on the, on the land use ordinance so that everybody here will have an opportunity to speak. As it, so that we don't try to rush them out of the way to get through the, through the rest of the agenda. And then we'll have the town planners report and we'll all go home.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion made by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure that that includes the relocation of the amendment to above the presentation.
It does.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is one abstention.
I am. I wasn't here.
We didn't, we didn't. You're here right now. That's the agenda for today.
Oh, I thought that was, oh.
No, no. Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, that's okay. Now. Now it's unanimous.
Okay.
Now we'll do the approval of the minutes for April eighteenth.
Okay, I move to approve as written.
Second.
Motion made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Senate to approve as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Public comment. Anybody have a comment about something that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. This is a proposed amendment to the land, the Arundel Land Use Ordinance related to accessory departments, apartments. It is seven oh two and I will open the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions about it? If you have a comment, yes, please do. What's that? Seated, standing?
Oh, boy. I know, I know I'm back in front of the Arundel Planning Board. Uh, my name is Bruce Reed and I'm here tonight representing Alan Inzorolo. He's my client. Uh, you may or may not know that I was involved in the earlier stages of, uh, proposing this amendment. On behalf of Alan, he approached me about his dilemma with a residential issue, which you may have heard about. This public hearing, of course, is about many a land use story. It's not about one applicant. I realize that. But it took me down the lane of talking with Lee J. And I listened to your, uh, meeting from April the eighteenth that you just approved the minutes on. I know you had a robust discussion about some language I suggested. I won't repeat what Lee J said about my comments, something about, uh, was it Jabberwocky or? I believe, I can't. Well, I did propose some language, Lee J, and, and all, and all, uh, without any humor involved. Lee J's comments and his revisions to my suggestions were great. On behalf of Mr. Inzorolo, what we're hoping to see the board do, and it looked like you were headed there at the last meeting, is to make a townwide, you know, not prevent people from using a new septic system in the A D U context. And not forcing them to use an existing one. I think that's what we've all come to here. Lee J wordsmithed my language further, uh, to make it clear that if you're going to use a new septic system, as the language now reads, you have to enter in a consent agreement with the town and have a decovenant so that you don't have any fear that somebody's trying to do an end run around your order, split their lot illegally. And I think, Tom, you, you made that point pretty well in the last, uh, hearing. So I'm just here giving a little background. I did work with Lee J. I've been helping Mr. Inzorolo. We're hoping, I, we're, I think this is very good language. It allows people options and as Mr. Lowry said a couple of times at the last meeting, and, and I know Jim's not here, but it's about the science. I mean, if you've got the science to put in a new septic system and it makes more sense than an old one, that you're going to overload with a new, it just, it's logical. So I think this is a townwide good idea. I live here myself. I'm not going to put an A D U in. But it's, uh, it makes perfect sense to me and, uh, I hope you can, um, see your way through to approving the language that Lee J has worked so hard on. He had more than me. He was the one who came up with the idea that, you know, we're gonna have to have more than just a showing a hardship, but I know Chairman Gannon made the comment that that's a slippery slope. Who's, you know, who's to say what's a hardship? How do you prove adverse circumstances? I totally agree. This is a much cleaner way to do it. Pure and simple, you've got to sign a consent decree that you're not going to ever split your lot after you do this. And of course, you have to go through the code office and get the new H H E two hundred, a new septic system approved. Um, if you're gonna do that or tie into your existing, gives options to people. So I think it's a great idea. Don't know where this will end up because, uh, I know we have at least one selectman in the room tonight. We're hoping that this will make it through, but as you said, Richard, last meeting, it is what it is. Just ask you guys to do your job and if it has enough time to get the, the June ballot, okay. If not, it doesn't. So, but thank you for your, for your time and thank you, Lee J, for helping with the, with the order.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing at seven oh six. And we will move straight into board discussion. Although I do think we had most of the discussion two weeks ago. Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll just mention, I, I was, um, the most opposed in the last meeting and a lot of my concerns have been addressed with the new language. So I, I think it took care of all my concerns.
Anyone else? What's your pleasure? We send it up to the selectmen. Okay. With, what kind of recommendation should we put on there, Marty? Approve it or, or not approve it? Okay. So we have a motion to send this up to the Board of Selectmen, uh, for approval and inclusion on the warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Marty and seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. We will send this to the selectmen and I was gonna ask him if he can get this on the, on the agenda, but I already know the answer to that question. He can. Thank you very much. We'll see you with, I'm assuming we'll see you at the town meeting. Okay, next item on the agenda. A pending application from Michael Thomas, a major subdivision sketch plan. Proposal to develop a twenty-seven point two acre parcel with six lots consisting of five single-family lots and a ten-unit condominium community on the sixth lot. The owner of the property is Dutch Elm Golf Course Incorporated. The applicant is Michael Thomas. Andrew Morrow is the project engineer from B H two M. The project is located on a portion of Tax Map nine, Lot three, with access through Tax Map seventeen, Lot fourteen dash four. Who's here to represent Mr. Thomas? I see they're keeping you busy tonight, Bruce.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Andy Morrow from, uh, B H two M, uh, Michael Thomas and Bruce Reed. Um, so this, as the board knows, it's a twenty-seven point two acre parcel, zoned R one and R two, uh, at the end of Clearview Drive within the Clearview Estates subdivision. The applicant currently resides at one eighty-nine, uh, Clearview Drive and is looking to purchase, uh, a piece of land owned by the Dutch Elm Golf Course uh, in the rear of his property. We were last before the planning board on February twenty, uh, sorry, February seventh of this year, where we had a sketch plan review with the board. Um, there was a quite a bit different layout at that time than what you, uh, see before you this evening. At the time, we had six fam, six single-family house lots along the golf course and a duplex and a quadplex on two additional lots. Uh, after that meeting, the applicant and, and my office, we kind of got together and, and reworked some things on the layout. Uh, that's what you see before you this evening. Um, our current layout is five single-family homes along the golf course and then a sixth lot that accommodates ten condominium units. Uh, two of those are a duplex structure with two units per structure. And then there's six uh, single condominium units, uh, on their own. After we came up with this new sketch plan, we met with, with Lee J, had a great meeting with Lee J. We discussed a lot of, of permitting of the project and a uh, specifically density and open space and a, and a lot of the ordinance requirements. Um, Lee J was very helpful on that process. Lee J also felt it was important for us to come back to the board to have another sketch plan with you with, with there being such a different layout. Uh, it's the reason we're here, here tonight to, to discuss this new layout with you, get as much input from you guys as we can before we jump into the design of, of this project. All of the, all of the units on this parcel will be, uh, sprinkled. That's something we talked about at the first, the first meeting. I just wanted to make the board aware of that. And the applicant is also not currently anticipating requesting any variances, uh, from any of the town standards, uh, as they move forward with this project. So with that, I'm gonna throw it over to Bruce to. Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Bruce Reed on behalf of Michael Thomas, um, I looked also at the last sketch plan, um, hearing that you had here. Is this better? Can you hear now? Okay. Should I turn this one off? No, you know, reverb. Okay. Uh, so Bruce Reed on behalf of Michael Thomas and, uh, I was unable to make the last meeting on April eighteenth. But, and I think Lee J was remote and probably having some, if I'm not mistaken, we had some A V issues. Yeah. I mean, I've advised clients in the past that it's makes a really good sense in a development of this size to get before the planning board and get a feedback, get some feedback before you formally go ahead and submit your application. That's what we were hoping to have done last time on April eighteenth. I reviewed the tapes, talked to Michael and the team here and thought it would be a really good idea to come back to you with, uh, again, as Andrew said, we've, we've redesigned the project a little bit, but really engage in some feedback. That's what we're here for. Before we submit formally an application, which is going to happen after this meeting, uh, we would just like to have your take on any major issues that you see with what we're presenting tonight. And Andrew might be able to go through in a little more detail, you know, the layout of the lots and, uh, the access. We're very well aware that there are a lot of neighbors here who are concerned already, not only been here, but selectmen. So we just want to be open and play by the rules and within the lanes. That's really what we're about here. As Andrew said, no variances. We're not looking for uh, any changes to the ordinance. We're trying to do what you set out in your land use ordinance to do. We're going this out. Yes, the density is uh, what it is, but that's what your ordinance allows. So I know you've got a lot of, of pretty experienced and bright minds on the board here. Um, we'd just like to get into a little feedback before we go forward formally submit. I'm anticipating, given the folks that are here in the room, that, uh, there are concerns. If the board has those in mind ahead of time, it might help us before we come back with a formal plan and not waste anybody's time.
Quick question, Andy. There is a, a line on the plan that sort of that creates a little bit of a vertex right around unit four of the condos. What is that line?
Yeah, you're talking about the, the darker kind of gray line on that plan. Yeah, that's. Yeah, the one that's got kind of two bumps in it. Yeah, that's the resource protection, uh, zone.
And what is that? What's the feature that?
Uh, I'm not aware of there. There's a, I know there's a stream quite a ways offsite, um, back there, but that's. Correct. Yeah, that's from your zoning map. Yep.
I have a question for me, Mr. Chair. Um, could you go through the, um, which units are in which zone are four versus are two, is it? Or one? Um, and how the numbers meet, meet the requirements in each?
Yep. Is now. All right. So the R one, R four zone line, zone line is here. Yeah. So the six, five single-family house lots are all within the R one zone and the ten condominium units are in the R four zone. Um. Aye.
There's, on that, there's eight acres in this lot six.
You have a calculator right there? Yeah, it's in square feet though.
Oh, it's in square feet. Yeah, sorry.
Five, eight, six, one, five, eight. So the R one zone, the total area is thirteen point four five acres?
And the R four is?
And the R four is fourteen point oh six acres. The, the, the density information is kind of spelled out in the notes on the plan. That was something we've, uh, been over in detail with, with Lee J. It's, uh,
Lee, Lee J, maybe, maybe you could help me. It's my concern is that would, wouldn't you need to take the, the amount of acres in, in each, almost like it's separate, divided by three in one zone, divided by one in the other zone? Is that what was, was done in this case?
Yes, they looked at, um, the R four zone and how many units would be allowed based, based on cluster development. And proposed those units, the numbers that they were allowed in the R four and the same with the R one, utilizing cluster design. They were, they were done independently of each other, if you will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's true. Mr. Chair. Andy is, uh, what are you guys doing on septic for those ten condos? Are they all on one or are they on separate ones or?
We, we don't know for sure yet. Right now, our intention would be to do, uh, individual septic systems for each of those. Um, knowing that the art resource protection zone does not allow, uh, septic systems in it. Um, there may need to be some of those units combined into kind of a common system. We haven't worked through the details of that yet. Um, putting, you know, those septic systems in there with the wells is, is kind of our next task after we get some survey work done. Yep. So I would envision, our, our goal would be to start with individual systems for each. If we, if we can't make that work, then we'll probably combine some of those, um, buildings into a, a combined system. I certainly don't anticipate all of them going to one system. Uh, if we did combine it, it would probably be, you know, a couple of units into a system.
Can I have a follow-up on this? So as, as a follow-up, um, on that, you, you need quite a bit of, of land to make them all work individually or if it was, uh, shared as well. Where would, where would they be going?
We, we have, we, we've gone through a couple of layouts of, of where those septic systems could fit. There's, uh, there's some area behind, uh, those first couple of units there. And then to the left of, I believe that's unit ten, the first unit on the left there. There's quite a bit of room over in that area. Um, we, we've also looked at some, you know, there's, we're gonna need some stormwater improvements as well. Um, so we, we were kind of reserving some area for that as well. So, yep. We, we've done some preliminary, preliminary looking at it and we, we think we can lay it out with individual systems for each. Um, but until we have all the soils worked on and all that, I, I don't want to commit to that.
They would all be on one.
They would all be on Lot six.
So staying staying in that realm with the ten units being proposed as condominiums, how would, would they all be, I assume that would be addressed in your bylaws? If some did end up being shared?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes.
Yeah, we would. Know that into the condominium declaration of bylaws. I wanted to mention one other thing, which I should have, uh, earlier, and that is, uh, this notion that I heard during the public comment section at your last meeting. Uh, some of the, one of the neighbors got up and asked about this idea that we have to amend the existing subdivision plan. Does the board remember that, those comments? Yeah, I've talked to, to Lee J about this. We both looked carefully at the subdivision statute. I agree with Lee J that there has to be an amendment, but it's really. Sorry, is that back on now? Can you guys hear me?
Yep, it's on.
I think I put my, my thumb on the power button.
Oh.
Okay. That's all right. Yeah. Twenty seconds pause.
I am gonna plan on making them all. Is that better? Okay, we have to move around a little bit. So as I was saying, there was discussion at the last meeting during the, uh, public comment section. A question raised about amending the existing subdivision plans. Obviously, Clearview Estates is a recorded existing subdivision dating back many years. And as a technical requirement of the subdivision statute, because we are proposing what will first be a private road off the cul-de-sac, which is public at Clearview Estates, we're proposing to tee off, come into our development from there. That will technically affect the existing plan. And Lee J can correct me if he thinks I'm, I'm oversimplifying this, but we do have to have an amendment process to that plan in place technically. So we would be doing that when we submit our application for this new subdivision. We would also be submitting an amendment. But it's not as though anything is happening to the existing Clearview Estate subdivision aside from, excuse me, changing the plan. And Andrew can speak to this. He's done this before. We're just changing the plan to indicate that there's an exit off a public way into our subdivision. So we don't need Dubois, the original developer, or now it's Randrick Trust, uh, whoever is, uh, involved for the Dubois family. We don't need them involved. We can do this ourselves and we will. But Chairman Gannon made the point at the last meeting that you might better get that out of the way first so that we don't go down the path of, you know, for some reason you might deny our, uh, proposed amendment to the existing subdivision plan and then waste everyone's time on the balance of our real application. So I just put that out there because I know numbers of the, of the neighborhood were concerned about it. We will be doing both, but I want to emphasize this isn't like reinventing the wheel for Clearview Estates. Yes, simply making sure we can indicate in the York County Registry of Deeds that this existing subdivision now has a spur off of it, which we're proposing, which will initially be a private road. And like anybody else, we reserve the right. We're gonna build it to town standards. Right, Michael? We're gonna build it to town standards and probably at some point look to make it a public road, but that's down the line. That has to go to the voters. Um, but I want to make that point about the amendment.
To the Chair.
Yes.
Lee J, I have a question for you. In, in a perfect world, if the stars were completely in alignment and the test pits all worked out and the building plan is as presented, is, is it acceptable the way you view it now? And if they could make this particular plan work with minor modifications, would it be within, uh?
Putting me on the spot here. Um, so, so I mean, I guess that, you know, in a perfect world situation, which we're not yet, um, they meet, they certainly meet the standards of the ordinance on the surface of it. There's still a lot of technical issues to be looked at, such as the soils, such as stormwater, such as traffic, um, and traffic circulation from here to getting out of Clearview Estates. Um, and what that means, you know, out at the main road. Um, the, from a design standpoint, and I think I have mentioned this previously, I mean, again, they meet, they meet the standards. I'm not enamored with the way the units or the, the condo aspect of it is laid out and stretched out. I'd rather see it clustered more in traditional condo type of cluster, but that's their prerogative. Um, as long as they're meeting the letter of the law, which on, generally on paper right now it does. But from a design standpoint, you know, I prefer to see something tighter in a cluster rather than stretched out linear the way it currently is designed.
So that brings me to part two of my question. And that is, given that something like this actually could fly, um, we have so many people here right now that have questions, comments and whatever. I think, um, I'm going to suggest to the chairman that we sort of open this up to discussion because I think that's going to help you uh, formulate, uh, whatever changes you might want to make to get everybody sort of, all your ducks in a row, the, your neighbors as well as your own projects. So if that meets with your approval, I think, um, we should hear from uh, those that have come to comment.
Yes, Marty.
Do, before we open it up, uh, I have a question on the condos. What is, what is, uh, with that going to be, that road there? Because I see the lot one, two, three, and four, that looks like a wider drive than going to the condos.
Yeah, there the the road going to the condos has no right of way associated with it. That is a access road just for those ten uh units on lot ten.
Yeah, but if you're gonna turn it into possibly a town road, it wouldn't meet the standards.
Correct, and and there's no intention to turn that into a public road, that portion of it.
That that's why I was coming back to ask that question. I mean, uh because you don't have the whiff along the way. So you you would have to have a homeowners association just for that section alone by itself.
Yeah, the the condos on lot six will need a homeowners association, yes.
And that's where you're gonna have the multiple septics?
Correct.
And multiple wells?
Correct.
And also are you planning on having an alternative offsite in cases a septic system fail?
Uh, we we have not got into the design of the septic yet. That's something we can certainly certainly something you consider.
One of the questions, I mean.
Yep.
By the the number of units you have. The number of what's called flushies or whatever else not and and how many unit, how many, how big are these condo units gonna be? Single bedroom, two bedrooms?
Three bedroom, two bathrooms, sixteen hundred.
Can't hear you.
Um, proposing the uh single families to be three bedrooms, two bathrooms, about sixteen fifty to eighteen hundred square feet, somewhere in there. Um, and the duplexes will be similar times two, so three thousand square feet with both of them.
So the condos are gonna be two, two bedrooms, you said?
Oh, three.
Three.
Yep. Yep.
To the chair, and um just for my clarity, what is the again, and I apologize, it's still sort of a new person on the situation. What's the difference between a condo and a home other than the amount of land it has?
It's just a type of ownership.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to that point, um we would have a con, a road association. Condo would have its own association. But we would the public road portion of it, Marty, it was a good question. I may have gotten ahead of myself by saying the whole thing may someday become uh public. We can't do that. If we if we're proposing this, has to remain a private road, but that would be the subject of a road association for those people using it. And the condo done this down in the forest, actually, down in Wells, in a really big development with a condo piece and single family dwellings, and you have to marry the condo association to the homeowner association. Easy enough to do, but that's what would happen. You would always have some formula for who contributes what to the road maintenance. Uh, but one would be a condo association, and it would be a road association. All all to the same point, and if we can't uh meet town standards, we we can't propose a part of it to be a a public way.
And the idea with the homes being in a condominium ownership and with single um septic systems on each one is so that really the association would only be responsible for the road maintenance and then landscaping. Besides that, the homes would be almost basically owned individually. As far as exterior, interior maintenance and so forth, I'm not gonna do like a whole association where they're taking care of the roofs and all that stuff. So they would kind of be they're just sharing the land and the road.
Okay, Paul. So if I understand this right, and maybe maybe I didn't, I don't know. So you're looking at for the right away, the right away coming in and the going to lots one, two, three, and four are gonna be up to road town standards. And then going to condos is just gonna be what?
That'll be an access drive, so that.
What are we talking, like a twenty foot wide drive or?
It's it's gonna have to be at least, you know, to be able to accommodate two-way traffic. So I would say twenty-two, twenty-four feet wide, something like that, twenty, twenty-four is pretty standard.
And lot five, how are they gonna get to there, please?
Lot five?
Yeah.
Lot five will be, the access will be off the cul-de-sac.
Off that cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay. So then just coming down from the cul-de-sac will be the twenty foot twenty-five foot, whatever.
Correct.
So cul-de-sac itself will meet the town standards as far as.
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Alright.
So if I'm just gonna follow that up a little bit because it's very early in design, but um even on that private um drive area, it will have to be able to accommodate our, you know, emergency equipment and turn around at the at the end of that drive. I mean, they're showing a hammerhead now. That hammerhead may not be designed large enough at this point to be able to accommodate our largest fire truck, so that's something that would need to be looked at.
Correct.
That's why also I was asking the width of the road on on the condo. Because cars one width and fire truck and everything else is wider. And I think on even if it's a private way, I think you still need twenty-eight feet is the minimum width instead of twenty-two with the uh I'm just throwing it out as a.
I mean, we'll make sure that it's wide enough for emergency vehicles for sure.
One, once you come up with your final plan, run it by the fire chief. He's gonna have to sign off on that.
Yeah, we'll we'll provide as part of our application a a turning template that shows a fire truck accessing that access drive and adequately turning around at the end. So you guys will have that in your packet.
Now we'll find out what the public has to say briefly. Because this is just a sketch plan review.
Rich, can I ask a question before we do that?
Absolutely.
Um, is there a spatial requirement, like a space calculation requirement on why um lot six is as big as it is, or could some of that go into open space? Are you reserving some of that area that's sort of the dogleg part of it? Uh, for septic wells, whatever you guys, infrastructure you might need?
We we potentially could use some of the other portion of it for septics for lot six. Um. The size of lot six at this point is kind of arbitrary. Um. That's certainly something we'll look at as we move into the design of this. What what we've shown on the plan now is just meeting the open space requirements and what was left has been kept with lot six. So that's that's what we've done thus far.
To the chair, just for my curiosity, is there plans to expand this further? Is that some follow up to that question?
There there's not. The the density of of this, this lot can support fifteen point two units.
Right.
Posing fifteen, so there's there's no possibility of expanding um under the current density requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone in the public? Nobody has any comments?
Yeah, we we did come not expecting not to speak, so I don't think we'd be really prepared, but if the initial um, thank you, Susan, by the way, for letting us speak or opening that door because I think it might help you folks and it might express some of our concerns, which is not always rules. You guys are living in the rules and we live in the worries and the concerns.
Let let me let let me interrupt just for a second. Could you cite cite your name so that I know who you are?
Yep, Peter Gillingham, one eighty-five Maplewood Drive.
Thank you.
Yep. Um. Couple concerns that pop up in our discussions is the road access through the lot. I'm not a lawyer and I'm not on a planning board, but we just wanted to make sure that that is a legal thing you can actually accomplish by just changing a lot and having a road go through. So that was one concern that's come up in many discussions, and I hear you discussing things we were discussing in our casual conversations of public road versus private road and these kind of things. Uh, tonight is the first night I've heard of an amendment to the Clearview Estates. I'm very curious, I bet other people are too, about the process of that. Um, it sounded as it was presented, maybe a little too simple, that it's just a quick, simple amendment to the design. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not sure how that works. Um, I was glad to hear Lee bring up the traffic issue. And that there'd be more because a lot of concerns are, we're in existing development and we have our kids and family and whatnot there. And this is a very large increase. Now, it might be legal and it might turns out to be legal. But there is a concern for traffic, and so I'm sure we're wondering how you address that as a town. It can't just be my feeling of what a busy traffic road is. So I think we would like to know how that really is addressed, what are those steps? What needs to be laid out in the plan, et cetera? Um, I personally am concerned about we have series of little brooks right around us, the watershed. It might work out legally or it might be a concern, and I heard concerns on the board about septic. And how this would be laid out and backup septic and those kind of issues I think are very important since we do have a brook running rate through our development and as well as further out. So um I'm sure that would be looked at. I'm not sure of all the answers there. Um. This isn't a rule thing, this is a worry thing. So I was on the Zoom when the first sketch plan was presented, and it was presented more as this isn't going to change the development, it's gonna be very similar to what we have. That was in sketch plan one, this is sketch plan two with condominiums, and that just seems different to me. I think it would be a different flavor, but um not sure if everybody agrees with that, it just seems like a different flavor than was presented before. Um, five house lots, very similar similar to ours, hmm, that's not that different. Condo unit squished in the corner there, hmm, that feels different to me. I probably have some other concerns. I'm trying to keep them rule-based or concerns that the board or Michael would need to address as he works through the plans as we move forward, and I'm not sure that I have them all because I was expecting to sit over there and just listen to you guys. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. But I'm sure that we're prepared to speak, but I would love to hear from other people and don't be shy, as I say in school, be pro, speak loud, get on up here, who's coming next?
So can I ask a question real quick to sort of dovetail off of one of his comments? Uh, do you know how many existing lots there are in the uh Clearview?
Fifty-five, thank you.
Hello, uh Patrick Steiner at seventy-six Clearview. And I'm gonna start with the first concern that um Peter had. Uh, because I got more stake in the game. Uh, so the traffic issue, so I'm uh one of the families that has children, and right now my children are of the age where they're riding bicycles. There are a lot of other up and coming families with younger children that are starting to experiment with the road. The reason why we bought into Clearview Estates is so our children can roam around freely. That in in Rundle that doesn't exist in very many places. We certainly don't allow them on Limerick Road. My concern is uh is simply from the traffic standpoint. What's gonna happen with that increased traffic? We already have concerns right now with people zooming up Clearview. Um, I've certainly have raised my voice to a couple, and I've talked to my neighbors with children uh who live at the lower end of the road um by the mailboxes, and they have they're frustrated with that already. So that increase is is a big one for us, huge for us. I can't I can't overstate that enough. So that's something, it not only is a concern, it's a scare. So that's number one and a big one. Um, I really hope the board I understand you guys looking at rules really take that into account because that's why we moved in and now the tables are changing on us. The second concern I have is on the wells. When we moved in, we've had problems with our wells. We've had it dug twice. As I talk to my neighbors, I haven't counted a neighbor yet who hasn't had a well issue. Running out of water is no fun, and we've done that. I've talked to other, my neighbors who've, not only they run out of water, when they've dug their new well, it hits saltwater. So the the well issue is something that is gonna be if this goes forward, that will be an issue. There's no ands or buts about it. We just are not in a good area for water. I will stop there and hand it over.
Thank you.
Scott Hooper, two fourteen Maplewood Drive. Our property would be the one directly forward of the very first house lot. Um, following up on his comment about water, but on a different sort. We've been in our house for seven years. My sump pump runs one to two minutes cycle, uh every one or two minutes, probably eight months out of the year. Yesterday, after all the heavy rain, I walked out back off of my property into what would become the house lot. There's standing water. There's a lot of standing water out there. I realize we don't always get four inches in a shot like we did. But there's some concern about what would all of that construction do relative to the water load in my yard? And will there be enough dry land for this construction to go along? So that's a water concern of a different sort. Thank you.
Can, sir, can you clarify exactly which which house where you live?
I'm at two fourteen Maplewood. If you look at the very first single house lot.
Yep, lot one.
We are front forward of that.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Roseanne Carp. I'm at twenty Clearview Drive, which seems to be far away from where all of this is gonna be tentatively taking place. I have very similar concerns about the traffic. Um, with uh what was obviously gonna be a dead end road and this um development. I have safety concerns um about especially like fire and safety. Um, being able to get access and would be interested to know if anyone had considered a secondary access through the backside from the golf course side out into the street on the other side of the golf course. Um. Just to relieve some of the stress on Clearview. Um, I can tell you from our experience last year when Phidium came through to lay their fiber and tore up Clearview Drive. Um, and the town came through and um very nicely promptly repaved the the street from Limerick up to Maplewood, I believe, and then part of Maplewood. But even with just normal traffic, that street's already falling apart. We have cracks going across the road every five feet from Limerick to Maplewood. What is the extra traffic going to do to stress that road? So that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. My other concern is also with water, but not so much with wells, but with the water table. And as others have have spoken about, we are prone to flooding. And I'm another one where my sump pump goes day and night. I actually have pictures of my yard from last year that turned into a duck pond. Um, and that's without, that's just with rain and snowmelt, and I had a duck pond. The golf course floods regularly with every heavy rainstorm. So would this development im- impact that and change the water table or stress it more? That would be one of my concerns. But thank you.
My name is Stella McCormick. I live at one eighty-two Maplewood Drive. My concern is the groundwater. Um, we recently had our water tested for PFAS and it is present. And we did have um an activated charcoal whole house filter put on. So I'm just concerned that the groundwater will be disturbed and will be getting into other situations. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Tim Boderazi, two twenty-two Maplewood Drive, adjacent to where this is gonna be. Um, I I'd like some clarification on the depiction of the circle in the right of way going off of the circle. There seems to be two, two items depicted on there for the circle. I'd just like some clarity on that.
Which which circle is this?
Yeah, where the road is today versus the depiction.
so so yeah but we're we're aware that the when they put the road in Clearview and Maplewood are not in the location that they were depicted on the town map but now that the road exists how is that handled would they have to re redo all of the roads because there's probably a number of people on this end of the neighborhood that are in that situation
right now I as as a staff person I don't have an answer for you I think that's something that needs to be discussed with select board um with the public works director find out if there's anything that needs to be corrected in relation to that or whether or not um you know what was accepted at the time was accepted in a way that would allow for adjustments to occur or not occur I think that there's a there could be a bigger issue here that we would need to look at and consider for the whole subdivision um it might be a catch twenty-two in the sense that you know um um don't always you know get what you wish for because you don't know if if the town can end up having to make adjustments that take additional land from you to put the road where it was built versus where the plan showed it um it's that's a much bigger discussion certainly that that would need to take place in another venue at some point
just for clarity for myself so the more solid line is your actual property this is what is is what happens right now okay
sorry the the solid line is the property line the dashed line is the edge of pavement as it exists today
to the chair
yes
actually this is for Lee Jay sorry Lee Jay but will you since traffic and water quality and the amount of water that's available both to the homes that exist and the ones that are planned to be built can you explain to the residents um that have asked these questions just what the board does to assure that traffic patterns stay within normal boundaries and what the town does to protect
sure
water watersheds and not running out of water
sure so engineering design one oh one um so let's start with traffic um there are um there are actual traffic engineers um who do nothing but traffic engineering um there are standards that are established in um um the traffic world that every traffic engineer uses relevant to the main DOT all the way through federal highway um and what the traffic engineer would do is look at the number of units that are being proposed they would project out the number of trips from every unit being proposed look at the background traffic that exists in the development as well as on the adjoining roads um and then look at the assessments of you know is site site visibility meeting the standards and this is where it gets a little bit you know you're we have to go by standards it's not um the feel of of um an emotional feel of the neighborhood um we only get to look at standards um are the site distance standards being met um is there a warrant to require a traffic light or stop signs being put someplace where they don't exist a warrant being again standards that federal highway and the main DOT use in order to um tell us you know you have a critical situation where stop signs are required or where traffic signals are required versus they're not required even though someone may need to stop and look left and look right um so there's that whole aspect of that and I'm sure I'm missing some some stuff here to try and just abbreviate it for you relevant to water quality um the only information we can get is whatever the engineer provides relating to water quality testing that will be done for well locations on their sites um the the town or the engineers don't have permission to go to anybody else's property and look at your wells and test your water but as it relates to this we can determine through the appropriate testing um and information one um what is the aquifer that we're on and how many how many gallons per minute does that aquifer yield and can it handle the added homes besides your homes um and then there's the water quality piece as to um salination issues um and whether or not that is something that needs to be looked into as part of their application storm water is a whole separate issue the only way we can look at storm water is once the applicant um designs the site um you'll see a whole lot of lines on the plans which are their grading because there will be final grades and there will be ditches and there will be a stormwater pond and we will need to look at that grading information and determine whether or not the water is going where it should and um getting to where it needs to be versus going to a budding property owners and and the like they also provide some very um high-end computer eyes calculations to determine um the storms um that we see um there's a lot of discussion these days about you know do you calculate for the five-year ten-year twenty-five-year storm um we're seeing more hundred-year storms these days um so it's you know what what do you design to and what are you looking at for your for your storm situations and we would ask that we would look at their data um to do that um I probably um hearing certainly a lot of um concerns and complicated issues I would also be re probably recommend to the planning board that a third-party engineering um review be done as part of this so it's just not my eyes looking at it and recommending to the board but another engineering firms looking at Andy and his team's engineering design to see if there's anything that was missed and anything that um should be um adjusted or addressed in the design um does that cover it for you
well yeah it does because you know not everybody including myself is aware that there are safeguards in place to make sure that indiscriminate building or construction doesn't take place without some thoughtfulness and so you can rest assured that what the rules are are gonna benefit the developer as well as that his neighbors I mean development is company coming it's almost inevitable you can't stop it but there there is a thoughtful process in place that's there to protect the developer as well as his neighbors so Lee Jay's on it and I think the idea of a an engineer a third party just passionately looking at things is not a bad one so you know but I think it's important for the developer to see what the main concerns are of his neighbors because it helps him develop a better project
right
and have you know better relationships with the people who surround it so and that was the reason why I threw you under the bus so and thank you for for going there
through through the chair please I'll be happy to answer anything but you gotta go through the chairman
you gotta come up and use the mic yeah could you clarify the engineers for the um the wells
for the wells
yeah it was it explain that again
so so they're going to um they're going to need to be looking
I guess it's the who's who's gonna be doing that who's engineers
whoever they hire retain on their team um will look at um the wells so there's a couple of things that they need to do um and and I think it probably should have occurred in your development as well um septic systems are required under state law to be separated by a minimum of a hundred feet from any well and so as there's one well on here which is I think maybe it's your property right across from lot two um so they're gonna need to look at where the wells are located on properties adjacent to this development as well as where they're proposing to put their wells in relation to where septic systems go um they're gonna have to have a hydro geologist look at that information um they're going to need to um determine you know whether or not again whether or not the the um aquifer um what the yield of water is from that aquifer and whether it's sufficient um and then there you know probably we we would probably um and I think they're sitting right here so they're gonna hear it wanna hear about water quality testing um about salinization and um PFAS um and and the like so um that would be part of their reporting in their submission to us
okay thank you
okay just just so that you know they will have to submit all of that information to us if we decide we can have that peer reviewed by our people that we will send out they will have to pay for it but we will have we will hire our own team to go take a look at it no guarantee but that's an option that we have
okay thank you
my name is George Lebrack live at eighty-two Clearview Drive in Rundle um when they were gonna put a light up on the Limerick Road on one eleven they they check how many cars go by there's twenty-four thousand cars go by there every day you had another what thirty forty cars in the other development it could be hell of a line it's like a ten-minute wait if you go out at around seven or five so it's gonna be a really big problem for all those extra vehicles and I can't see why they can't go out another bill that why why ruin our development why can't they go out by the golf course or the back road
I just have a question is um this proposed development will it include any affordable housing
that's up to the applicant we we have no requirements that they set aside a certain number of houses for affordable
did did Janet Mills pass a bill that will come into effect as of July one that um affordable housing is mandated and developing and main
I don't believe she passed the law to that effect she
LD LD two thousand three
that's the ADU
well it's yes so um planning one oh one so um the legislature um which the governor did sign um was a bill um which everybody in in our field has dubbed LD two thousand three which was the legislative document number for that bill there are three component parts to that bill one is the accessory dwelling unit issue which says that municipalities shall allow um accessory dwelling units wherever residential units are allowed um and that's why we're adjusting our accessory dwelling unit regulations now the law also says that if you have a vacant piece of land um you can you now must allow um a minimum of two units on your parcel um up to four units if you have this is where it gets very complicated but if you have a comprehensive plan that was found consistent by the state law um have a growth management area identified or have water and sewer available to that area in here in Arundel um you're only required to allow the two units on a vacant piece of land which we now do in most of our residential areas and in doing so the first for example the first unit must have one acre of land and in the R one zone um or two acres of land um and the second unit would also have to have the additional acre of land you just wouldn't have to have two lots you could put them both on one parcel and then the third component of that law is the um affordable housing development law and um again it gets very complicated in the sense that if you wanna allow it to have affordable housing um you either have to have um a comprehensive plan that's consistent with the state law state growth management law um a growth area identified in the plan um a hu- housing and urban development growth designated area um and or sewer and water which we don't have any of um if we did those areas that have that or identified as that would have to allow not could allow have to allow two and a half times the density that's currently allowed in whatever base zone you're in so if you're in a one acre base zone and someone wanted to come in and do an affordable housing development they would get three and a half units for every acre where currently our zoning says you get one unit per acre so you'd be two and a half times let's just round it say three times the density allowed in order to accommodate an affordable housing development which then increases traffic issues um and increases many other issues that could come along with those um but we here in Arundel do not meet that requirement I can also tell you that right now there's um because I'm I'm very involved in this within the region in helping towns draft their ordinance changes um there are numerous numerous um bills right now in the legislature with various amendments to the law um and so even though we know what the base law is for affordable housing um we don't know what's gonna shake out at the end of this legislative session that bill that we've been um analyzing and dissecting and trying to understand for every municipality that's different could be completely different by the time this bill is are these amendments are done
thank you very much
sorry for the long windiness but it's a very complicated issue
yeah yep
uh Pete Gillingham one eighty-five Maplewood Drive um just listening to all this very informative thank you for the I liked a little go to school learn about planning um it brings up uh in a minute I'd like you to speak to the process of amending the Clearview Estate because that's first time I've ever heard of that so we'd like to know how I would like to know how that happens and how we go about that so we make this in place and when it comes to the road going across Michael's property I just want to make sure and it would be helpful for Michael and for everybody else to make sure we have all the ducks in the row there so this is more like I'm throwing a concern to the planning board um I heard different kinds of roads concerns of a road going across someone's property and then the property boundaries aren't even exact and unknown and the property is actually on a road that we think is a road that he thinks is a property um I I would think red flags would go up there I'm sure that it can get planned out and sorted out but I would would feel remiss not to really bring it up tonight have that slip through the cracks a lot of money spent here a lot of planning to find out something was done illegally by mistake even um so for the planning board that's a very big concern for mine so maybe just put that in your back pocket and if you wouldn't mind taking me to school on amending maybe estate that'd be wonderful
sir sure um and not to be too cavalier about that but that amendment actually is um very easy and secondary in this whole process in the sense that um what they would need to do is provide an application um for amending the subdivision for Clearview Estates and provide a revised plan um of the subdivision which would show the the relocation if you will of of for right now um Michael's property has a sixty I believe it's a fifty or sixty foot right of way on the other side of his parcel to access what we're calling lot six um that would change and be shown on the other side where the cul-de-sac would be amended to um allow the new access that's what the planning board would review and approve so that a revision to the original Clearview Estates plan would be recorded in the registry of deeds um it's it it would need to from a process standpoint and I can't remember if someone um mentioned it or maybe it was the chairman but what would need to happen um as part of the process but um in conjunction with the whole review process would be to um approve the amendment to that subdivision first and it can all be done at the same meeting um but it would be an approval first of the amendment so that that has been addressed before the development itself would be reviewed um I think that just about does it on that
it's here it's here under the mic
Still trying to understand the whole circle thing, would the, would the town have to redo the road prior to this development being approved? Because it's not in the right place?
I think that's a question for the Board of Selectment and Public Works.
Well, and I, yeah, and I think we need to, we, um. I'm more me than the board, but would need to see what shakes out with the actual survey. I mean, we do have information from, from the engineering firm, um. But from my perspective at this point, it's not a, it's not a stamped um plan. And until the surveyor makes sure all of his data is correct and he puts his stamp, he's required by law to put a stamp on it. Um, I don't consider anything official. So once we see that and we determine, you know, what's being impacted. Um, and maybe it's all just Michael's property that's being impacted, I don't know. Um, then we're gonna need to kind of figure out, um, what, if anything, we do from there.
Yes. Yeah, Dan Deloyes, Curtis Road, Arundel, um, I would say that if. If what is discussed about that circle, more than likely what would happen would be is be that the amendment to the subdivision. Basically to leave it as is, right, rather than force somebody to tear up somebody's yard to, whatever, there would be another amendment to the subdivision. To basically buy it off so that it's all recorded.
Just a corrective, a corrective plan amendment, if you will, yes, of course. It would, it would just be this, uh, part of the subdivision review and approval and recorded in the registry. I mean, a, a, a lot of times, you know, what happens is you have a sixty-foot right-of-way. Um, and I, and I love it, I don't wanna bore you all to death with, with stuff, but you have a sixty-foot right-of-way. And many times years ago, especially less, very less today with all the controls that are out there for engineers. The road may actually meander inside that sixty-foot right-of-way, it's not dead center of the right-of-way. What kills me about it is, um, many towns say, oh, well, you know, that your setback is fifty feet from the center line of the road. There's no guarantee that the center line of the road is in the center line of the right-of-way. So people's setbacks could vary as well. Um, so I think it's, it's just a matter of, you know, what has happened and can it be amended correctly without. Um, yeah, I don't think we're gonna wanna go out there and dig up anybody's yard, I think what's on the face of the earth is on the face of the earth. And um, the least we can um disturb that or deal with it on paper, um, the better off we're gonna be.
And any other questions? Hearing none.
Just a quick comment, I mean.
It's some more people put their hands up, sorry.
Just one quick question, is Margaret Sylvane, Maplewood Drive, is a survey, uh, sorry. Is traffic survey required as part of any development that we put in, in the town?
Not, not required of any development, no, um, but in situations like this, we're certainly gonna be asking for that information.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to briefly say to address the, uh, this road issue, that's. A curiosity to me as a real estate lawyer, to put it mildly, and I think we have. An obvious solution in the hands of the developer here, so, I mean, i- if it's, if it's been placed improperly. Michael owns the property and I, 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 believe me, I've got it on the top of my nose to talk to Roger. And, uh, you know, come up with the, Lee Jay's right, we need a sealed plan, but certainly looks like. An error was made in the placement of the, uh, the tarred surface. But here we are before the planning board asking for approval for a subdivision, and we have, we own the land, so. I'll kind of leave it at that, but we need to follow up with this and make sure our survey information jives with the towns and what happened back in the day.
Back in the day, who knows? Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, we will go back to our discussion, Marty?
I have a question for you guys. Um, under condos, are any of those gonna be uh fifty-five and over, or that is a, uh? Just anyway.
That, that's not the plan, no.
No, I just.
Yeah, so just no, so the answer is no.
Second thing is, are your condos are gonna have basements? The reason I'm asking that is because I've listened to the neighbors. And they're, they have their glorious sump pumps working all the time, and I didn't know if any of these would be just, uh. You know, non, non-basement type.
So I'm planning on having basements, if it, if the water table does not allow, then I would do slab on grade.
I mean, that's, that's my only reason I was asking, I mean, because. If anybody had a sump pump or needed it, it worked yesterday real good, yeah.
I mean, also though, I mean, just like between like the whole neighborhood, I mean, at the time when the neighborhood was developed compared to this, I mean. The infrastructure, the housing, everything, it's just gonna be so much more advanced, you know, and. Everybody that lives in Clearview can clearly know that the neighborhood really wasn't built properly. And I'm intending to build this neighborhood properly.
Okay, the ne- the next step, according to the subdivision regulations is for us to do a sidewalk. That will start the clock ticking in terms of when you have to get the, the, everything submitted to us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Michael, do you want that clock to start yet, or?
I'm sorry, but according, according to the ordinance. The applicants shall present the sketch plan, following the applicant's presentation, the board will ask questions. And the date of the onsite inspection is selected, we're supposed to choose that today. No, they will have six months with which, in which to give us the preliminary plan, but we're supposed to do a sidewalk. And they have six months from the date of the sidewalk.
Does that matter to us though, or no?
No.
I don't think, I don't think you guys are ready yet, are you?
That's a sidewalk after sketch, and I assume, well.
Yeah, we do, we do the sidewalk all the time before there's even been a shovel turned.
So, you know, remember, um, site plans, conditional uses, it's a different process, it's find the application complete. Set a date for your public hearing and have a sidewalk. Under your subdivision regulations, um, under um pre-application meeting, sketch plan and site inspection. It does say, within thirty days of pre-application meeting, which would be tonight. Um, the board shall hold an onsite inspection of the property and inform the applicant in writing of the required contour intervals of the preliminary plan. Or final plan in the case of a minor subdivision. The applicant shall place flagging at the center line of any proposed street. And the approximate intersections of street center lines and lot corners prior to the onsite inspection. And that's in the, in the pre-application sketch plan levels.
Yeah, we're prepared to do that, yeah. I defer to you guys as to, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly a lot of work that we talked about tonight that needs to be done before we file our, our preliminary plans with you guys. But to have that together within six months after the sidewalk, I think is, is a reasonable timeline.
You, you are, you would be allowed to ask for an extension if necessary, but the, the first step in the, is have the sidewalk. And then six months from that point, you'll, you'll either have to request an extension or you'll have to make a presentation.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
We, we'd encourage a sidewalk sooner than later, I think, uh, having a sidewalk involved early in the process, I think is beneficial for everybody.
I think it's nice to do a sidewalk when there's no snow on the ground, personally.
I totally agree.
Yeah, there might be some water, but. When would you gentlemen like to do the sidewalk? Yeah, and ladies, I'm sorry. I'm not politically correct enough. I could, I could've said, when do you dudes wanna do it, for you guys, or whatever.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we do a site walk on the May sixteenth at six o'clock, can you guys? Do that? Two weeks from tonight.
What day of the week is that?
Tuesday, two weeks from tonight. Two weeks from tonight.
At what time, sir?
Six o'clock. Does that, does that work? Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty? Five thirty?
Yeah, it's, it's a relatively large site to take a look at everything.
But I'm, I'm fine with five thirty as well.
Okay.
I'm fine with five thirty.
Okay, can you guys support five thirty?
Sure.
Okay, is there, is there a second on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowery to hold a sidewalk at five thirty on June sixteenth.
May sixteen.
May sixteen.
Can, can I also, um, public is allowed to come on that sidewalk. But the only thing I would suggest is it's really fact-finding for the planning board, so. You know, you can certainly listen and hear everything that's going on and be right there. But it's for the board to fact-find it, ask questions and whatnot, and give the applicant further directions. But everybody certainly is more than welcome to come along.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could, could I ask what the board would like to see specifically on site, so I can make sure we have, you know, some flagging out there to, to.
Flagging.
To delineate what you, what you guys specifically wanna see.
Be where the road is going to be.
Center line of road, building corners?
Yeah, it's, it's right in the ordinance, Andy.
Okay.
Um, hold on, I just had it. Yeah, um, the applicant shall place flagging at the center line of any proposed street. And at the approximate intersection of street center lines and lot corners prior to the inspection. That's the only flagging it really requires, I mean, I. You know, um, since it's all residential homes and, and it could vary. Um, by individual homeowner, if it gets to that point. I wouldn't expect you to flag corners of lots, but certainly, um, well, corners of homes. But certainly, um, maybe some of the lots, so that the board has an idea where those lot fructages are.
Yep.
To the chair, I would, I would prefer to see like the cusp of the condo area of what you're thinking of where they would be. Um, the house, the house is less so, but we'd like to see those flagged out, like that area.
Okay, like the building corners of, of those condo units, yeah.
Would it be possible to do it on the following two weeks, like the thirtieth instead of the sixteenth?
We could still do it.
Is that Memorial Day weekend?
It's Tuesday. Day, the thirty-first?
No, sir. I think I'm gonna be gone.
Are you worried about being able to get things done?
That, and I have something going on that week there, so.
Is there was either the twenty-third or Saturday that would work for everybody?
The twenty-third would be fine, I think.
The third would be fine?
You think that's enough time?
Yeah. I'm good for the twenty-third.
Can you amend your motion, Paul?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to, uh, move it from May sixteenth, uh, to May twenty-third.
Same time.
Five thirty?
Five thirty. I would think so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, five thirty. Let's do it.
Yes.
Okay, motion has been amended by Paul Green. To hold the meeting on May twenty-third at five thirty. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Hi, anyone opposed? One opposed? Six in favor? Okay, now, sir, if you would like to ask that question. It's open space right now. It's, it's, it's being kept as dedicated open space, they won't be able to build anything back there.
The, the con- the ten condominium units are proposed on Lot Six.
So I think that got a lot of good feedback.
Okay. Yeah, we've got a bunch, we've got a bunch of stuff we have to discuss.
We appreciate you giving us, uh, all the feedback you did and appreciate having the butters to be able to speak, that was very helpful, thank you.
I think Glenn knows.
Gotta hand it back.
Yes, sir. We're going, we're going to. We're going to have a sidewalk on the twenty-third of May.
Right.
They then have six months in which to submit the final, uh, the preliminary plan to us. It, we can either accept the plan or send it back to them with, with some additional changes that, that we're going to request. Uh, if we approve it, we will then have a public hearing and we will vote on it after the public hearing. The, the, the planning, once they give us the preliminary plan. The town planner has to determine that it is a complete application, that we have everything that we need. It doesn't mean that we have everything to approve it, it means it has everything that we need, and we could approve it or we could deny it. Yeah, Marty?
To the chair, the question is, um, if we're having a third engineer looking at it. Do we wait to see if it's completed that way? I mean, uh.
Marty, it's just a, it's a possibility, right?
It's a possibility, yeah.
Given that we're.
As they're submitting a preliminary plan. We may not have, we wouldn't have a third engineer review until it was submitted to them. But when do we know it was, everything is happy enough? To, to say it's complete?
When that fellow kept sitting immediately to your right says that the plan is complete.
So, as I always say, um, completeness means that they've submitted information. It is required as part of the submission checklist. That does not mean that it rises to the level of addressing every issue that you folks may have. It just means that they've submitted something that you can look at the checklist and say, yep, it's been provided. So that's where the board would then, um, upon my recommendation, find the application complete. Once the application is found complete, then you can start deliberating, talking. Let's theorize, you want a third-party review. Um, you get to that point during the preliminary review discussion, you would table the application. And then I would get it out to a third-party engineer for their review, so that, um, they haven't spent. Um, all the engineering dollars yet, because there may be redesigns needed and other things before a final plan is really tightened up. Um, so they would, you know, if, if that becomes the point that you feel you need that third-party review. After the application is found complete, um, and you deliberate preliminary, you wouldn't approve it. You might table it and give me direction to get it to a third-party engineer review.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now it's time for the planners' report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, planners' report, not a lot to report, I do know, we do have one new application coming in for the next planning board meeting. Um, it was submitted the other day, um, so. Uh, it's one that we have already reviewed, um, at sketch as well, it was the, um. The, um, Frisbee Golf, um, this golf facility off Route One. Um, so they've submitted and, uh, I'll be getting my. I, I, I'll be getting my memo together, hopefully in the next week for you folks for the next planning board meeting. Um, for that application, um, other than that, uh, we're just keep cooking along.
Sounds like a plan.
Wait.
Yep.
Did they have to do, or did they get the study from the
Good, I'll be back.
Road study?
I'll be back on.
They didn't know that was going to affect or not?
Oh, from Cape Arundel cottages. Um, I believe at this point, the reason they're going ahead is because they've gotten their DOT permit for their street opening.
Yeah.
And again, as part of your, when we see the application, it will be a completeness issue and set a date for a sidewalk and a public hearing.
Only reason, because I know there was about the traffic study about where or what and
Correct. It was more about, it was more about the design.
Alignment.
Yes, in Route One.
Yeah.
Um, for Cape Arundel cottages, but I believe at this point DOT has issued their, their street opening permit. Just got the application, so I haven't looked at it very close.
To the chair, may I ask that when we do sidewalks, if we can plan to have them on evenings of meetings? I know that that we try to on this one. Other, due to other employment issues and other responsibilities to do different evenings and days is difficult. So I've made allotted time, if we can possibly have them before the meetings, have the sun is available to us to actually do that versus planning them randomly on different days, I would appreciate that.
Not always going to be available. We usually try to do them on nights that we have meetings.
Right. So that's why I appreciate that. I'm just saying, I'm moving forward if we can look at that versus just going for different random Tuesdays or days. Something because I have other available things, I do other Tuesdays. Thank you. I move that we adjourn.
I so wish it, the applicant, we're still here. I have questions for you.
Did you hear me? I move that we adjourn.
I, I did. We are adjourned.